Good morning. It is Tuesday, December 14th. I'll call to order the Story County Board of Supervisors meeting. Please stand if you're able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't believe there are any changes to today's agenda, so a fair motion to adopt today's agenda. Second. It's been moved in seconded space. All time. Markin?
Aye.
Seven's aye. Now it's the time for public comment. This comment heard is the public to this topic on today's agenda. If anyone in the public media room that would like to explore it and make public comment, or anyone on Zoom, if you're on Zoom, click star nine or use the raise hand function and we'll unmute you. Not seeing anyone raising their hand or rushing forward in the public media room. So both public comments on. Agency reports. We have the emergency management quarterly report. Good morning, Kate.
Good morning. I'm guessing this is where I should be at.
Please, thank you.
Well, while this quarter was relatively quiet, the tragic events of the tornado outbreak in Illinois, Kentucky, and Arkansas demonstrate the need for communities to prepare for disasters. The responses covered by my report highlight how our agency is developing partnerships and relationships that could contribute to the successful outcome of small and large-scale disaster response. With the help of our volunteer search and rescue organization, Star One, the sheriff's office was able to locate a missing person in approximately an hour in some fairly heavy wooded areas. This same organization would be invaluable in organizing a wide-area search in response to activities such as ongoing in the tornado areas. With the help of ISU Vet Med, COLO Fire, Story County Animal Control, and Sheriff's Office, we were able to attend to the needs of hogs that were involved in a transport accident. By capturing the lessons learned in previous events, we were able to develop a checklist that brought together the right assets and people together to deal with this unusual situation. Our recent planning activities reflect the need to not just conduct planning, but to continually revise these plans and adapt them to the ever-changing environment. A review of our mass casualty plan confirmed its processes were solid, but it highlighted the need for us to completely rethink how our new radio system would support these operations. This led to an analysis of how we might use communications to integrate resources from multiple counties that use three different radio systems during a mass casualty situation. Our objective was to allow the transport officer, that personnel in the field that has to decide where this patient needs to go to get treatment as quickly as possible, the ability to assess the overall medical system, which includes all the way from Mile Falls all the way down to the Des Moines metro area, to gather information from that system and determine where to send that patient, to get them to the right place at the right time. We continue to do those efforts, and as a matter of fact, we're going to integrate our efforts into a region-wide mass casualty response plan that the development is ongoing. Our communications planning efforts are also leading to the development of training on this new system for our first responders. As we were discussing this system and how it might be used during a mass casualty event with the first responders that were participating in our mass casualty revision committee, they asked for this kind of training so that they could know more than just click a radio and push a button, what's really going on with it. So we're going to develop that training. We've been starting that process in conjunction with Nick Presenyo over at the Story County Sheriff's Office. Additionally, if we get this right for a mass casualty, that same template can be adapted for a tornado or for the search of an abducted child. So there will be a lot of ongoing continued planning for this. There's also changes going on in the counties surrounding us, but this is going to pay off big dividends, but it is going to be a long-term project for us. As mentioned, planning leads to training, and this is necessary to ensure that the people that have to execute these plans know what their roles are and to ensure that they have the skills to execute those duties. Our office executed 95 student hours of training for disaster command and control, both here within Story County, within our own EOC, and along with our partners in Ames. The benefit of this training is twofold. It builds familiarity with the plan, and it also develops those that have to execute the plan the ability to function under what is a high-stress crisis situation. It's hoped that through this training that we're paying back to the communities that offer us these votes for our EOC by growing their ability to do critical thinking, which should allow them to be an asset to their departments as they do their normal duties. We also sat down and had a discussion with the medical examiner, as she is new to her duties, and brought up the unfortunate situation should we have a mass fatality situation here in Story County. We look forward to continuing to work with her to grow our capability to be able to react to what is a very difficult situation. It goes beyond just the collection of the deceased and making sure that all the legal requirements. We have to integrate that into notification of the next of kin and a much broader aspect to that. So we hope to continue to work with her on that. While I've been focusing on how we've been working to improve the capabilities of the people within our emergency management system, which I always stress is the most important thing that we have, we've also been working to improve our equipment. We refreshed the IT resources for our backup EOC using a $27,000 grant that we got from Homeland Security. We then updated and repurposed the old computers that were the backup EOC computers, and using the skills of a much younger and smarter intern that we had, we built a mini network for our command trailer. So now we have the ability to take that trailer, offer it up to a community, to offer them similar but limited capabilities such as those that we have down in our EOC. And it's not just for Story County. We would offer these resources to any of our surrounding counties should they need that. Additionally, we purchased some very low-cost programming cables, which our amateur radio team took and reprogrammed the four non-Storycom radios that we have in our trailer. Through this, they have saved us hundreds of dollars and also have given us access to public radio frequencies and radio operator channels, and also public safety frequencies used by our surrounding counties. Now, looking ahead, some grant funding is going to become available in the next quarter, and we're going to use that grant funding to conduct an after-action review of our COVID-19 response. We anticipate that the contractor that we're going to hire is going to want to do interviews with other agencies involved in COVID response. We need jurisdictional executives like yourselves and your staff to take time to participate in these interviews because it's absolutely essential for the AR process to gather inputs from outside. It's through this after-action review that we develop things like that checklist that we use for animal transport responses and to improve our ability, the speed, and the accuracy of our responses. Iowa State University reached out to our office to see if we could work with one of their graduate students to help her do a public health project as a part of a master's degree. We linked her up with our two county animal shelters, and she's going to assist them in revising their disaster response plans. Additionally, this Monday, we're going to be having our elected officials' emergency management workshop with both state and county officials, and I appreciate Story County's participation in this event because you, as elected officials, have important duties, both preparing for your jurisdiction to be able to respond to a disaster and also to provide that leadership during a disaster. Honestly, that's just the tip of the iceberg of what emergency management activities have been going on. We look forward to continuing to work with you and your staff to make Story County better prepared for disasters and to come together as a whole community when the next event occurs. And with that, I'd like to open it up to any questions you might have.
Elected officials workshop is going to be in this room now, correct?
Yes, it is. Fortunately, we had good turnout, and to increase the space, we're going to have it up here. Questions?
I have a question. My fellow candidates have questions. I would thank you for all that you, the outreach that you've done, little updates that you provide to us.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Is there anything Story County could be doing to help those who have impacted by the tornadoes?
One of the things that we always stress is that what those communities need right now is financial. So if there was anything we could do in that aspect, which I seriously doubt that we can, that is the best thing. You know, overall, for the entire system, the better prepared we are, the better off our system as a whole. We can gather the lessons learned from there, which will be coming across over months as they look at their response, and that's probably the best thing that we can do.
Makes a good point to make because I remember various other disasters. Katrina's and other ones where people might say, "Let's get a car and take a whole bunch of stuff down someplace." And that's just a translog.
It actually, it actually degrades the overall response process because it takes a lot of resources to do that. Now, one of the efforts that our interns have been working on is to work with United Way and with MICA, Mid-Iowa Community Action, to establish the ability for us in this county, should we have a disaster, to be able to offer people that opportunity to provide financial assistance. And the good thing about financial assistance, if it goes through the right channels, it can meet those needs that many of these individuals will have right up front because it's not going to have some of the restrictions that some of the other agencies that provide this kind of relief have. So we are looking to blend a system to make sure that we can get funds out to across that spectrum to give people what they need to get them through the first, you know, 24, 48, 72 hours on through, all the way to helping them get back on their feet and reestablish themselves.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. It'll be a good time. I promise you.
Next consideration of minutes, we have the 11:30, 12:07 minutes. I would move the minutes as presented. Second. It's been moved in seconded. Markin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Seven's aye. Next consideration of personnel action. I would move the role of personnel actions as presented. Then it's been seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Markin?
Aye.
Seven's aye. Sent agendas. Anyone pulling the consent agenda? Yeah, I didn't consent agenda. Second. It's been moved in seconded. Markin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Seven's aye. Now we're down to a few public hearing items. We have first consideration of ordinance 298, amending chapter 86. Districts requirements, chapter 85, general provisions, chapter 88. You have a flight plan, you have a great kind of land development regulation. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Andrea. Andrea, let's get started on this one. As you said, it is an ordinance amendment to chapter 88 mainly of our land development regulations, which have really general site planning standards that most everyone has to meet when they're doing a development in the county.
Yes, and as those site planning standards, the most major change I'm going to start with though is the non-commercial livestock amendment. It reintroduces to the code provisions for residential zoning districts to have essentially hobby livestock on their property. So we'll start there. Just as a summary of the changes, Plains Zoning Commission, they have seen these proposed amendments at a couple of different meetings. Once for feedback on both the changes that Amelia's kind of been handling with the general site planning standards and the non-commercial livestock. They provided feedback where they'd like clarification. We have routed this for inter-agency review, did not receive any comments from other departments. However, I did reach out to the Director of Animal Control just for some initial feedback on the non-commercial livestock aspect when we were first writing this to get her perspective and concerns that Anna might have. Those were also integrated in. Then at the meeting last week, December 8th, Plains Zoning Commission did vote to recommend approval of ordinance 298 to Board of Supervisors. So I'll start with the non-commercial livestock aspect. This is just, I put in bold here on that slide, you know, these standards do not apply to the A1 agricultural district or the A2 agribusiness district. Initially, they did, and then as we thought about it more, we took that out and made it so that these standards, you know, they're exempt from that. We're making non-commercial livestock just a principal permitted use in those two districts because, you know, commercial livestock, as we're defining it, is a principal permitted use. These standards don't apply.
Roosters through Story County, if we've done that.
Yeah, right. Yes. So we took those out, exempted them, it's just principal permitted use, and then we have just, you know, some standards that we'd like to apply to residential zoning districts if they like to have these types of animals on their properties. The first is a density maximum. That table's on the next slide. So going over this, and we have added to chapter 85 a few definitions of large, intermediate, and small animals, as well as how, you know, we're defining non-commercial livestock. Again, just for hobby purposes, not for making income. You know, if you want some eggs for your family, if you have a child involved in 4H, this would, you know, apply to you, these standards. In terms of residential zoning districts of AR, R1, and R2. To have large animals, you need an acre-size lot, otherwise that will be allowed. And then you can only have one per 20,000 net square feet. You know, we always look at the net lot size, so that excludes road right-of-way. That's how we apply all of our bulk standards. So the same goes here.
And that would allow you about two large animals per acre, just about 40,000 square feet in an acre.
Right. There are many animals, one for 5,000 net square feet, and then small animals, one for 1,500. There's a change here. Plains Zoning Commission didn't, we used to have a provision to cap the number of poultry or small animals on a lot, and the Plains Zoning Commission asked that be taken away, thinking the lot size kind of limits that in and of itself. And we agreed and took that off, so that doesn't have a cap like the other two categories do. And in the keeping of roosters, since these are largely residential districts, are prohibited under these standards. And I just pulled out a few bits of the standards that kind of hone in on where we've tried to take nuisance conditions into consideration. You know, we don't have a building code in the county, so we can't, you know, regulate how big a pen or a coop is, or how many square foot each animal has. We can't do that. So we did, you know, general stuff about has to be, you know, predator resistant, or the animal should have access to the shelter during the day, just very general, broad provisions. These three, though, together, you know, we hope to be able to handle nuisance-type factors if we get a complaint and we can go through our, you know, typical violation process that we would go through if there was a serious complaint submitted. We made an increase to setback for the housing of large or intermediate-sized animals. It has to be at least 50 feet off the property lines. For like the AR district, for example, or just a regular accessory structure, it can be two feet off the rear property line. So this substantially increases that, makes it, you know, a different type of accessory structure, a special type of accessory structure, so it has a greater setback. Doesn't apply to any, you know, pens or coops for the small animal category. And of course, it would have to follow all other bulk requirements for that particular zoning district. Maneuver disposal, you know, we did talk to environmental health about this one. They don't have anything on the books as far as newer disposal for this size of operation. Talk about CAFOs, of course, they do from the new management plans, but not for this. So we're just suggesting, you know, follow best practices, you know, Iowa State, other professional sources. And of course, we have a mention in there about not discharging waste directly into water body, water of the United States. And then no nuisance conditions. Again, if we got complaints about odor, noise, animals escaping, we have this in the code so that we can actually act and provide a notice of violation if that was needed.
Let's stop this second.
Yeah.
Energy, manure disposal, it says on your slide, if waste is being discharged into a water of the U.S., the additional state or federal level restrictions may apply and shall be followed. But what you said was you can't do it.
Oh, I apologize. Yeah, right. So it would be state or federal regulations since they.
And you quote the state and federal regulations?
We do not right now.
For giving reference to them.
We can change that.
That'd be pretty easy to add.
Yeah.
I would do that.
Okay.
Could you talk to the court? Yeah, I think that would be a very serious issue.
Oh, yeah. And I think part of it is we do oftentimes just cite Iowa code as amended to capture any future changes. So just making sure, right, we're appropriately citing it so in case, you know, it's updated in the federal code, and we can do that for next time.
I think that covers that one. Next slide, we had standards for the keeping, non-commercial beekeeping. We've seen, you know, large interest in that. We did talk to the bee extension specialist with Iowa State Extension, who let us know that there's this optional state registry of apiaries. And just looking at that map of where people have voluntarily registered that they've got hive, these things are already existing in subdivisions around unincorporated areas. They seem to be very popular. We just aren't aware of it. Having this provision makes it legal, you know, should somebody have a complaint or something like that. It makes it legal to do this. Based on concerns from the commission, as well as talking with the extension specialists, we added that no Africanized bees would be kept on any property. The extension specialist did relay that it would be rare or not heard of to see Africanized bees this far north because it's too cold. But, you know, the commission did have concerns about those types of bees. So we added it in to the regulation here. We have a provision for having a flyway, essentially, so, you know, if the hive is kept close to property line, that's to fly up high enough where it wouldn't be directed coming at a person, you know, across the property. And then, yeah, having adequate supply of fresh water. Extension specialists agree that that is important. One of the only complaints that he has had recently was, you know, a large amount of bees were coming to a neighbor's property gathering on their water feature and essentially the person felt they couldn't enjoy their backyard because of triny bees. So keeping that provision in there. Next slide. Yeah, so on December 8th, that was last week, you know, they still, there was one commissioner who had concern about not having a limit on the number of beehives. We previously had that, but took that out because the extension specialist said that, you know, if you don't allow the hives to be split and they get too big, then you have these feral colonies and they start to swarm. So we learned, you know, that little bit. We still have one commissioner, you know, concerned. Another commissioner agreed with our recommendation, though, to allow those to be split to prevent those feral colonies. Another commissioner asked for clarification on, you know, using adjacent lot to increase your overall lot size, so therefore you can have more animals. That would really only be an issue, we feel, in A1 and A2, which are exempt from these standards. You know, a lot of these AR, R1 subdivisions, individuals only own the one lot, right? They don't, it's not impossible that you have an adjacent lot. I have seen that. But it wouldn't be common, and we have provisions for putting accessory structures on an adjacent lot under the same ownership, and those rules would apply exactly as they're currently written. It wouldn't increase the lot size unless you actually join them together. Did a tax parcel join and actually join them together, so. Next slide. Some example wording from chapter 86 of the R1 district, where we've added non-commercial livestock subject to these standards under permitted accessory uses. This is how it looks in the AR and R2 district as well. In the A1 and A2 district, it's just listed as a principal permitted use under commercial livestock. Next slide. The definitions, those were all laid out in the ordinance itself. We've added a few, you know, revolving around, you know, the beehives, keeping of bees, replacing our current definition of livestock with a definition for commercial livestock because now we're making a differentiation between those two things, and amending our current definition for stable and agriculture livestock production. If you have any questions about those, after looking at them in the ordinance, we can answer those. Next slide. I think, or Amelia take it over unless you have more questions about that particular part of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Um, these are just other really small clarifying changes to the rest of chapter 88. The first one is we added a diagram to our access easement requirements because we get a lot of questions on this section of the ordinance. I think this diagram will help back up our current interpretation of the ordinance so folks can see what it's supposed to look like on their property. Next slide. Other changes, oops. Sorry. We have a limit on the length of a dead-end street. That's for a couple reasons, you know, in case there's, you know, to improve emergency vehicle access, make sure we're creating connected streets and subdivisions, kind of variety of reasons. And we didn't really have a definition of how to measure the actual length of a street before. So we've had instances where because a subdivision cul-de-sac has other cul-de-sacs coming off of it, we haven't counted the full length. And so we're clarifying that it's not how we measure a cul-de-sac length. You have to connect to a through street, and the point of connection of through street to the end of the cul-de-sac bulb is the length. We also added, just a general provision, that when you're designing lots in a subdivision, they should be designed to preserve natural resources to the fullest extent possible. So drawing lot lines around natural resources and taking those into consideration.
How do you define natural resources?
Yeah, that is related to the C2C plan, natural resource overlay. Let's see, just clarified how to design a corner lot because the language is really confusing for. Next slide. Our grading and stormwater management plan requirements, there's an exception for the county engineer currently in road construction projects that, you know, they have to follow the standards or they don't have to submit an actual application. And we recently realized that we have a lot of federal and state projects in the county, and while, you know, they have to meet, you know, our erosion control standards, getting the D O T to submit a permit, it doesn't always happen. So we added them as an exception, too. And then there was, in our stormwater management requirements, there was a word, we used the word pre-development and defined it as the pre-settlement condition, and that was creating some confusion with designers because pre-settlement refers to like prairie before there was development in the state of Iowa. And so I just wanted to clarify that word. Next slide. Clarify how to properly mark a gravel parking lot. We allow gravel. We don't require paving. But when you have a larger gravel parking lot, for instance, at, you know, St. Peters and Paul Church, on Penn Line Road, it creates an issue with folks double parking if we don't have appropriate like curb stops in the parking lot. Adding an exception for construction projects and swimming pools under lighting standards so that construction projects don't have to have, that occur at night, don't have to have a limit on lumens. That would be an safety issue for sure. And we also clarified that the screening requirements in our, this section, apply to home businesses as well. That's how we enforced it, and we just wanted to clarify that. Next slide. So this was one of the larger changes. We have a traffic impact analysis right now. It's a really good ordinance. It just needs some tweaking because we've had really small commercial site plans. It just needs some tweaking, because we've had really small commercial site plans that have been required to submit a traffic impact analysis when they're creating, you know, maybe eight additional trips a day. There's no minimum threshold right now. So we worked with Darren, we looked at what other counties and cities are doing, and came up with a minimum threshold for submitting that, a hundred trips. And then we also added in that, you know, based on that traffic impact analysis, the county engineer, board of supervisors, board of adjustment are the ones to require further traffic impact study, instead of having a separate threshold for that. Just because, you know, it depends on the road conditions in the area. It's not necessarily just a number of trips to be generated that could require public improvements.
Can you remind us of the difference between an analysis and a study?
Yep. So the analysis requires, basically you calculate the number of trips to be generated, and you look at the surrounding street conditions. And you look at accident data, but there's no real, real, the analysis doesn't require, for instance, that the developer will have to pay for, like, street improvements. It's really just a baseline to see if a further study is needed.
Developer do that as part of the application?
Yes. So we'll get the traffic impact analysis in, we'll review it. Staff can determine if it's, if a further study is needed and require that before the application moves forward. I think this will be a better process and a fairer one. Then, we also increased the size of the area the study and analysis should cover, because Darren pointed out that currently we were asking for an analysis of intersections in roads within a quarter mile, but county roads are spaced every half mile. So we introduced a provision that you should look at intersections in roads either within a half mile or a larger area if the impacts of that trip generation are anticipated to go to intersections beyond the half mile. And that's something that other cities and counties do as well. Questions on this section? I know there's a lot of red text on this slide.
It was odd to me, say, county roads are based on a half mile, because their section is a mile on each side. But you're saying that the site can, would be at the most half mile.
Like in the center. Yeah.
Center.
Right. So like, for instance, the YSS site was in the middle of the section. So each.
So we had to look at mine either way.
Yes.
Whereas with a quarter of a mile.
Yeah.
A third of a mile would just go towards the closer.
Right. But now we're saying half mile, or, you know, if you're three-quarter of a mile from the intersection to the south, that one will have to be.
Especially in the closest intersection regardless.
Yes, exactly. Yep. Okay, next slide please.
There's a question though.
Oh, yeah.
The closer intersection may not be the intersection that's going to bear the most traffic.
Right. And so we're saying the intersections, at which point after, you really won't be able to tell the impact of the traffic.
Say that again.
So it's the closest intersections, and then you don't have to do further study down the road if, you know, you're getting into traffic impacts from such a larger area that you really won't have a discernible impact on those intersections from your development. If the language would be clearer. I can read it.
I'm saying, let's say there's a subdivision that's a quarter of a mile from the closest intersection. The closest intersection is gravel road. But three-quarters of a mile, the other way is a paved county road as opposed to.
Yep. And so we, under the new language, can still require that they look at the paved county road. Yes, that's what we're doing. So we're saying half mile, or if you're going to have impacts, because there's a paved intersection down the road, you're going to have to look at that one too.
Okay.
But if you're. Yeah, yeah, so.
I think that's really important.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's been, we haven't had an issue with it, but I could sure see an issue happening. Thanks. And then fencing, we proposed a couple changes to our fencing requirement, and we had one planning and zoning commissioner that was not supportive of the changes. So I just put these on a separate slide at the end here. Basically, we introduced a requirement that in-ground pools should have a fence around them for safety. This isn't something that the state currently requires. We do have a lot of in-ground pools in subdivisions, and we don't require that they're fenced, so neighbors' kids can't access them or their own kids. I think there was concern about the aesthetics of this at the Planning and Zoning Commission. You know, in rural areas, what's the point of having a fence around your pool? But at the same time, you know, these regulations apply to subdivisions north of Ames or outside of Huxley, in addition to, you know, in other parts of the county. So the commission overall was supportive, but we just did get some feedback that it doesn't really make sense for 35 acre parcels to have a, a fence around the pool. But, you know, this applies to smaller parcels in denser areas as well. So. And we also clarified that fences should be limited to four and a half feet in your, in the front setback area, so they don't create visual obstructions with traffic. And we're also allowing razor wire to be used in certain instances, for instance, on fences in the A1 agricultural district around wind turbine, or not wind turbines, cell towers. We didn't allow any use of, like, razor wire before, but for anti-climbing around cell towers or other installations, power substations, that's a typical design. So we've allowed it, but it hasn't been in the code. So we're amending the code to say that's okay in certain instances.
Back to the swimples, stupid question, so would a farm pond that was used by swimming be considered swimming?
No, I, I don't think so, because here's how I see this ordinance working. We take a permit for an in-ground pool. We don't take a permit for an above-ground pool. I don't take a permit for your farm pond if you're creating one. And it's not retroactive either. So we're not going to go back for previously permitted swimming pools and require this. So moving forward, when we get a permit for an in-ground pool, we're going to need to see the fencing as well. And this is pretty common for cities and other counties to require. Questions on that?
So, this apply then to someone who has one of those above-ground pools that they just put up themselves?
We said they should be appropriately secured to provide unintentional access by a child. I, I didn't say you have to have a fence, because a lot of above-ground pools are already four and a half feet tall. So there's not so much issue of a kid walking and just like falling into the pool. Sometimes they have accesses or ladders that should be secured, but we're not taking permits for above-ground pools anymore. We used to, but they move around, so it, it, it was a weird thing to permit. And so, yeah, if we get a complaint, we know we could say, listen, you're, it has to be secured somehow, but otherwise, we really won't be enforcing on above-ground pools. And that's it. So option one would be approving the ordinance and setting second consideration for Tuesday, December 2nd. And I would just have you all add that we will just bring it back with that code section added too, as a condition. And I think that's, you can make amendments during the course of an ordinance without republishing, especially if they're pretty minor like that.
Just for clarification though, today is December 14th, so you can make second consideration for the 21st, right?
Yes, sorry.
No, I just.
Make sure when they get things done. Yeah. For the next item too.
Do we have any other questions? Of course, this is a public hearing, so I will. Right, I will open a public hearing with consideration of ordinance number 298. You are on Zoom, use the raise hands function, or unmute yourself. If you get a public hearing or if you're in a public viewing room, if you can come forward and make comments. Wait a little bit, if anyone challenges with Zoom or anything. Anyone want to come forward to end? Are you seeing anyone? Looking at coming forward for what comments? So we'll close the public hearing on that.
I've moved the board of supervisors approve ordinance 298, amending chapter 86, chapter 85.08, and chapter 88, with the addition as discussed of the state code section. And we do this on first considerations, at second consideration, for next Tuesday, December 21st, 2021.
Then we just seconded, Markin, I said in the slide.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good work. Keep those bees in.
Now we have another, another public hearing item, first consideration of ordinance number 299, amending certain boundaries of the official zoning map.
Good morning. So in front of you today is a rezoning request for the whole nursery and greenhouse ordinance 299. This is for approximately 11 acres. It's between two different parcels. It's located at 22085 Southern 80th Avenue. It's currently zoned commercial, light industrial in this area. And so zoning request will bring this existing dwelling into performance with the ordinance. The land with the business on it will stay in commercial zoning. So the hold said, submitted a zoning permit to start an addition onto building on the property. Through a review, we couldn't permit it because it didn't meet the zoning requirements. So through that, we figured out that the rezoning would allow this to happen, and this also falls in line with city aims, with Ames or fringe plan. Because this would be from commercial to A1, so we're down zoning, which then works better for city of Ames, major fringe plan, that any future commercial development would have to be annexed to the city. Next slide. Well, there is the map of the area, the hashed areas, the area to be rezoned to the A1 district, the red that isn't hashed would stay commercial where the nursery and greenhouses are located. The first standard is that any rezoning shall conform to the C2C plan. The interim fringe plan is an adopted component C2C plan. So by rezoning this, it brings it into performance with the Ames or fringe plan, as well as C2C, making a future development here, so have to be annexed into the city to follow the plans that Ames has in that area. Next slide. There's the Ames or fringe plan, it sits today. That pink area is the planned industrial area, so any is planned industrial before anything can take place there that Ames has to annex before any commercial moment can happen. So. Next standard. So then the next standard is that the proposed rezoning shall conform to the statement of attempt for the proposed districts. So by going to the A1 district, there is some ag land there that'll be protected. And this area is identified within all planning, is that protectionist area for future, either ag or for the interim or fringe plan is what's needed. So it meets those intents. The third standard is that it shall be able to show lane uses, everything around here except for, oh, is an ag production, so just bring it back in performance with the area around it. Then the, there are four of the standards that fall, but staff, this part of view, they aren't part of the rezoning request.
They're about the least a score, if you're upzoning, but we're downzoning.
So.
And natural resources protections. But again, we're going to a more restrictive district.
So we did place some on the property. We have not received any comments from the public. It was published in the Tribune, the Daily Journal, and sort of kind of some, some on December 2nd. With that being said, the playing and zoning commission meeting last week, they did recommend approval of the rezoning. That. The options are the next slide with option one would be approving and setting the second consideration for December 21st.
The public hearing items, we will open the public hearing, first consideration ordinance 299, amending certain boundaries of the official zoning map for Kansas City. If you would like to make comments, please come forward. Please state your name.
Certainly. Can you hear me well? My name is John Tillow, T-I-L-L-O. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Holon Gardens and Greenhouses, and Mike and Diane Holon, personally. I'm an attorney at the Paisley and Singer Law Firm in Ames. The address is 3236th Street. And I would, on behalf of the applicant, I would just reiterate, or I should say, second, the staff report, we asked the commission to approve the rezoning request. I'm here to happily answer any questions you might have. It came about because the applicant would like to add on to a building, an accessory structure on their individually owned parcel, the parcel not owned by the corporation, and wasn't able to do that, which is a permitted staff process. It's a down zoning, like the, like Marcus said, it's, I think, more restrictive in uses, and the surrounding area is all agriculture, surrounded by agriculture, so it seems quite appropriate and meets the standards that guide your decision. But if you have any questions, either fact questions or how this came about, I'm happy to answer those on behalf of Mr. Holon with Ms. Holon. We would ask for your approval and that you follow option one as outlined by the staff.
I was just, I would assume when they zoned it, commercial, light, industrial before, there wasn't a plan to do anything else other than have a home there. It was just kind of a, didn't think about it.
So that, the initial commercial, it was zone commercial was in.
89, right?
Yeah. Yeah, 1974 was when the entire, so at one point, the entire two parcels was on commercial in 1974. A long time ago, and then in 89, they rezoned the southern portion of that to A1. Now we're kind of bringing it all the way back up to just around that commercial site.
So they originally, it was all the way to the traps.
Correct.
And part of the natural area, the rooted area, has been returned to A1.
Most of it. There's about a three acre, but part of this rezoning will bring it all to A1, so.
Okay, that's all my one, thank you.
We've not had any feedback, negative or otherwise?
No, none.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wanted to make comments before we close the public hearing? I think any, so we'll close the public hearing.
I would move approval of ordinance 299, amending certain boundaries of the official zoning map, to write comment on first consideration and set second consideration for Tuesday, December 21st.
The second motion. Seconded, Stasil, I, Merkin, I said in the slide. Now we're on to additional items, we've discussion of consideration for Civic Plus, website consulting.
Good morning, board.
Morning Barb.
So we, we came to the board a few weeks ago with, oh, maybe let me back up a little bit. So during the website refresh, some of the committee members had questions about, well, is this refresh going to improve the navigation of the website? Is it going to improve the search functions? Is it going to make it more logical to find things? And so when I reached out to Civic Plus, they said, oh, no, that's separate. So you had questions that I couldn't answer. And so I've invited the Civic Plus team here to go over exactly what the navigation piece would be and what it would gain for Story County and how we could use it to make our website better for the public and for the internal users. And I will turn it over to the Civic Plus team.
Good morning, everyone. This is Holly Brown. I am the project manager at Civic Plus and that's been working with Barb and her team at Story County on the redesign project of your website. So thank you for allowing us to attend your meeting today. And so just to back up a little bit and kind of give a segue to the conversation. When we first started meeting with Barb and her team for the kickoff meeting of the project, one of the main things that we talked about during our first meeting was the navigation on your current site. It's maybe a little cumbersome at certain points. It sounded like there was a definite desire to kind of clean up and maybe reorganize the content a little bit, just to be more intuitive, less clicks to get to the pages, easier to find items of importance to users, that sort of thing. So we talked a little bit about some assistance that we could offer to help with that reorganization process, which is kind of leading to our conversation today regarding navigation and content consulting. So I have also invited Jennifer Valanek to attend the meeting this morning. She is one of our consultants here at Civic Plus. She has been a consultant for over ten years and has worked with lots of different customers with Civic Plus on this reorganization and of content navigation. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to her so that she can kind of give an overview of this specific consulting offering. And then, of course, open it up to, to you and your team there for any questions that you might have. Jennifer?
Good morning, everyone. Thank you very much for the introduction, Holly, and thank you all for your continued partnership. Just a little bit about the consulting, even though it's called navigation, it also takes into account the content. So we are talking right now about a refresh of your website. We're in two thousand twenty-one. You did the same thing back in two thousand seventeen, and the first website was back in two thousand twelve, it looks like. So often what happens is content is moved over and over those periods of years, things get missed. New staff comes on, they might not have been fully trained, might not have understood the tools. So in addition to the navigation, we're also looking at things like accessibility. We're looking to see that things are following the, the proper best practices. During those meetings, we will look at analytics. We would meet with individual departments, go page by page through their content, give them, hear from them what kinds of questions they're being asked. We've, we've been dealing now almost two years with the pandemic. Everybody has gone online. There's probably things that are being asked of the departments today that might not have been something that was being asked in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, or even nineteen. So we really take a holistic look at it, bringing our subject matter expertise as well as what we're seeing and hearing from many other counties across the United States. So that's a little bit more about what it would entail. Again, it's very hands-on. It would be department by department, and it would involve all types of things, not just the navigation, but even some of the ways to use the tools and to make sure that the way that the content is being displayed is being done in the most efficient way, not only for the end user, but also for staff.
Do you have any questions, board?
Yes, this is London Merkin. You're saying this would be hands-on, department by department. When I looked at your schedule, you just showed department workshop, department workshop, department workshop. Does that mean those are individual hour, individual hour segments with various departments?
Yes, so that is just an example, but we customize it for each county, city. Depending on, depending on the departments, sometimes the meetings might be longer. There might be a department such as planning and zoning that has a lot going on that may need an hour and a half meeting. There may be departments that just need a little bit of a cursory look and some conversations, and that might only be thirty minutes. So that, that agenda would be customized. We would work with Barb to find out where the, the key focuses, focus are, and then we would schedule that accordingly. Typically, an hour for each department.
And what would be the work product? What would come out of this besides you having talked to people?
Good question. Each of our, each of our customers has a different approach. The best way to do it would be that we would make, hands-on, we would make changes right there in the moment. And for the changes that needed to have further discussion or conversations, then that would be, the, the work product would be action plans with due dates and a person's responsible for making those changes or even making the decision whether or not it's something that needs to be followed up on, whether it is something that can be changed or whether it is something that just needs to stay that the way it is. But in an ideal world, we would sit down and we would help make those changes right then and there and get it done.
Would you, if you're doing that, just making changes as you're sitting down with the department head? How would you make sure that something didn't happen in department A that actually negatively impacted department B on down the line? I mean, this is one website. It's not twenty websites. It's one website and there are interconnections and things. And there might be something that, let's say, a department had thought was a very good idea that maybe somebody with more knowledge of the website didn't think was such a good idea. Is that what I'm saying?
I do, I do, and that's a very good question. So that is the, that would be the decision. And as, as subject matter experts and, and people who that have worked with different counties and gone through this before, we have a pretty good idea of when to ask those questions. So, and there, there might be meetings that we need to call in two departments or three departments because the process or the program that we're talking about, when we're looking at a, at a page or a section of the website, might involve more than one. So we don't want to make decisions that, from one department that are going to affect the other. And that's really that subject matter expertise that we bring. We recognize that, we, we know when to, to ask those types of questions. And that would fall into one of the categories where I said that, you know, maybe we have supplementary conversations and maybe there's a, a second round of conversations with more departments. Or maybe it's also something that needs to be tabled and come back to at a, at a later time.
So this is all within your three days or four days of engagement, this would all happen. Do you imagine that there would be work that would be identified, changes that would have? So I assume that would all come in within the prices that you've listed. But what if there's things that can't be done? I'm assuming there would be things that couldn't be done right there in real time and maybe we're not within the expertise of county staff doing? How would you, how would those things get done?
Yeah, there would be some items that most likely would fall out of the, the package that you would purchase, whether it be two, three or four days. What we do is, again, we, we can save some time. If we know that there are a handful of items that need to have a couple of weeks of discussion, we can save some time and schedule it in another month or down the line and circle back and help with that. In other cases, it's something that's going to be a, a longer conversation. And that would become the responsibility of the, the, the point of contact or the person's responsible there in the county.
So we really don't know what additional costs we might end up with past this, the time for these three or four days, and you can't give us any guestimates on that.
We typically don't see any extra costs after this point. I mean, it is more of a, a collaborative session. So I don't foresee that there would be any additional cost. Not to say that there aren't clients that have departments that come in and they might propose or present some sort of a, some sort of a scenario that maybe we say, you know, it sounds like there are a handful of folks who could really benefit from some training. Or maybe they mention, I know that you've already got a, a robust communication tool for emergencies, but as an example, sometimes we'll meet with the departments and maybe one of our other solutions might be something that they need to take a look at. But as far as the content and the navigation and the website itself, the only other thing that I could see was maybe there's departments that say, you know what? We'd like to engage you in a, in additional sessions just for us and have you on hand. We do have clients that want us to come back in six months, or it could be something like training.
I'm just, this is Latifa. I'm just wondering how successfully you feel the virtual trainings are compared to the onsite or engagements, non-trainings, sorry.
That is a really good question. You know, after going on twenty months here, we've become, we've always had the option to do virtual versus onsite. It, it, it's really up to each individual customer how successful it is. It can be challenging to do it virtually, but if everybody's bought in and we lay some good ground rules, we can absolutely be successful doing it virtually as much as we can onsite. Onsite's always preferred.
And also, if I might add, I think it's very important for us at Story County, just to take a hard look at our website. And instead of saying, oh, the navigation is terrible, let's have some examples so that we can really fine tune the training to meet the questions that we have. Civic Plus doesn't know what we're thinking. You know, they can give us the general outline and what other counties have done. But if we have specific things that really bother us about the website, we need to make that clear so that we can get it taken care of within the time allotted for us.
So Barb, as IT director, would you lead the process to make sure that everybody did that work before the workshop so that we got the best advantage out of it?
Oh, definitely, definitely. I'd, I'd be more than willing to even go one-on-one. Sometimes people don't read emails, and I know you get a lot during the day and they get missed. So I would maybe send out an email to the department heads and follow up with a phone call or a one-on-one, just to see, just to make sure they're thinking. Sometimes, you know, we get busy and each department has their own busy time. So you can never hit a time when nobody's doing anything. So I think it is important for us to have information before going into something like this.
I think the follow-up is crucial. I don't think an email does it. And I also would assume that your staff have noticed things about the website and that you're doc, you would document all your staff's observations before the virtual sessions or before the sessions, whichever way they were done.
Yes, and we do get help desk tickets about things like that. So we've got that, those kind of questions organized already. But yeah, that's a good point, Linda.
Would IT staff participate in all the sessions? Do you, your knowledge about the website issues? And maybe to help find some things that if somebody says, you know, where I asked earlier, is that really a good idea to do? I think if you have staff available throughout all the sessions, you might catch when there's a recommendation being made that maybe you want to say, stop, let's think about that.
Sure, yeah, we already have three IT staff that are on the website committee. And I guess it doesn't make sense for all of us to be on it. But the three that work most with the, the phone calls and the tickets that come in are on the IT staff or on the website committee.
And that is typically how it would go as well. There's usually somebody from, from the customer that does go through all of the meetings to be that voice of reason and to, you know, to kind of give us input as well as we lead the conversations. Because as Barb said, we don't, we don't know what your individual preferences are. So we do need that partnership.
Barb, this is Lisa. I was just going to say, you, you talked about sending like an email out, follow-up calls to department heads and stuff. I would assume with that, you'd also want them not only to be just thinking about what they want, but actually to maybe be writing some things down for discussion purposes. Because I can think about something thirty minutes beforehand or hour beforehand, but actually writing a few things down to have ready for discussion takes a little bit more of my time to do.
Sure, that makes sense.
We actually have a, we have a questionnaire that we like to send out to the departments first, just to kind of get everybody thinking about some of the, the, the questions that we're going to ask. You know, thinking about what has transpired over the past, you know, months and years as to what types of content they're updating, what kind of calls they're getting. You know, it's a, it's a short questionnaire. It takes about ten or fifteen minutes for the departments to fill out. But it really does pull together the, the, to help lead those conversations when we get into the meetings.
Would all employees be able to do that, or just the department heads?
You know, I think it'd be a good idea if, if it was sent out to everyone.
Yeah, we encourage all participation, not just the department heads. We, we like to involve folks that are taking calls, folks that are at kiosks, at desks. You know, people that are, are closest to the work. So another piece that I did not talk about from a process perspective is what we can do is what we call a stakeholder meeting. And we've had stakeholder meetings with upwards of thirty, forty, fifty stakeholders. Stakeholders being anybody who has the time to come to a meeting. It typically takes about forty-five minutes. And we just lay out the process of, and why, the, the goal of what we're doing. And instead of making it an IT project or sometimes a public information project or communications project, that it's really an enterprise-wide project that we're all in it together. And it's not only the, the residents and the end users that we want to help, but some of the things that we're talking about can improve efficiency of the staff as well.
I have one other question. So after you've gone through the, the agenda, the cover many days, is that, what support do you give beyond that? Or is there, or does that end after those few days?
It typically does end after those few days. Again, if we are strategic and we save some of the time, then we can, you know, maybe do some follow-up sessions at, at designated intervals. But at that point, it would be necessary to purchase additional, additional time.
Jennifer, are any of those questions answered? I mean, we do, there is a help desk at Civic Plus, and we do call that occasionally. Could additional questions be answered via the help desk?
That could be, that could also be a, yeah, and we have enhancement webinars. We have the Engage Exchange, they call it. We have a help center. So there are resources to help, and we do talk about those as part of the consulting too. You know, we want, we want people to be able to be self, be able to self-serve themselves. There's a lot, it's a very easy system to use, but there's a lot. And if you don't do every piece every day, then we want to make sure that you're able to go back. And plus, with all our enhancements, we encourage the use of the tools to stay up on top of what, what changes have come.
And Jennifer, the, the questionnaire that you're talking about, is that, is there a different one for external customers? So one that, that would be more appropriate to share with a few people in the general public compared to our, our employees, our internal customers? compared to our employees, our internal customers? Or is it all one questionnaire that we could share out?
They are two different focused, two different focuses. So, you know, one would be internal and then there's a series of questions that we could add in a component for surveys, for a survey if that was something that you were looking for. We have, you know, we have a tool that we can set it up on, or if the county has a tool that it prefers, then we can share the questions and give you guys a timeframe to run those questions, but they do have two different, two different focus.
Yeah, I would be curious to hear from others outside of the county, how user-friendly, how accessible our website is for someone who doesn't deal with this all the time.
You kick some good issue, let me tell you.
It's a big, it's a big website and there's only a lot of information on there.
It was only a few years ago that I discovered it, you know, before I was on the board and I'll tell you, now I can pretty much find stuff, but it was, it was kind of a challenge. It was not necessarily intuitive. So, it would be, and I don't remember all the things I was thinking, but I think it would be good to have, you know, some people we know in the community would do look at it there.
When I look at the site, there's just a couple of things that pop out to me, just because, you know, I do this every day, so, you know, I notice that some of the left navigation is not alphabetized. We recommend alphabetizing because people do not understand why we chose something to be a different rank order versus alphabetizing it. You know, there's some other things that I noticed, some pages are very long, they're very detailed, they're great pages, but there might be a tool or two that could help display that information so that it's more friendly from a mobile perspective. You know, up around 70% of, 60 to 70% of traffic is coming through mobile devices these days. I don't even know what the latest benchmark is after COVID. It's just going to continue to keep growing. So, you know, again, those are all conversations that we have with the departments when we look at that content and, you know, try to, try to help re-educate. And again, sometimes it's staff that came on after the original website was published and this might be the first time they're hearing some of this.
Do you have any other questions, Board?
I do, I have one more question. Let's say we went with a three-day engagement and we get in there and it turns out this is much bigger than we thought, we need more time, is it really easy to add on an extra day? Or if we get in and find out we don't need this much, we're done already and it's day two and we, like, how flexible is this, is the arrangement?
Adding on would be easy, just have to let Holly know that you want to add on, you know, another virtual session. We sell them in, they can be, for what we call post, post-work would be done in four-hour increments, so you could buy four hours or eight hours or upwards of that. And then again, if we got into it and it was two days in and we said, you know what, we think we've done the work that we need to do now, let's use some of this time to schedule follow-ups in a month, in three months, or six months. So, you would not lose the time, we would work with you to figure out where it makes sense to come back and circle back and use up that time.
And was that based on just the virtual engagement or was that also onsite engagement?
So, an onsite engagement would typically be done in one block because of the travel.
Thank you. So, Barb, what is your thought about the virtual versus the onsite?
You know, I guess it depends on the, on the topic. I know we've done, when we brought in the Intranet, we did virtual training and I guess I, just from the feel of the people who were in the room with me, I felt it would have been more productive if we had onsite. People were looking at their phones and they weren't paying attention. If you've got an instructor there who's, you know, engaged and engaging the crowd, I think onsite is a much better experience and more valuable.
Can I, can I add to that though? You're talking about a training sessions, it's maybe eight hours versus a virtual, but here's, here, you know, whatever department it is, planning and development, here's your one hour with the consultants and you've already been asked to get a list of the things you want to talk to them about. Isn't this, I can't imagine anybody looking at their phone when they're, during that hour. I think breaking it up into the smaller segments and having a shorter amount of time, you're not going to have some of that stuff that you have when people are just tuning into a Zoom session because they got to be there. This is a different kind of.
That is true. And when we did the refresh in 2017, we did have onsite and we did it in that, in that manner. The different departments came in at different times and I felt that was very productive.
That was onsite, you said?
Yes.
But I'm saying if you're only giving, since Amelia's here, I'm looking at her, so you're only giving planning and development an hour and that's their hour with the consultants to say, here are our problems, how can you help fix them? I don't think you're going to have that lack, that lack of participation that you might have in a full-day training session, something like that, that's virtual.
Yeah, it's, we would like that to be the case, but there are, there are many factors that do play into it. And again, not to say that it can't be done, but it is, can be a challenge even if it's
What are your thoughts, Board, on the onsite versus the virtual?
Part of it, this is Lisa, I think part of it for me, we have become such a virtual, it just becomes so, so easy or so normal, I guess I would say, and the convenience of that, I could see that probably working with everybody's tools if they've got that time. I understand the onsite too. I would question, just because I don't know, if you're making changes right away to a website while you're on a Zoom with a person, are you able to see those changes? You know, how readily, I just don't, I don't understand the technical portions of that. So, that would just be the one question I would have, I would have, just because I don't, I don't know.
I think screen sharing would take care of that. It may, it absolutely may on that. And it might even be easier because you could see changes as they're being made.
Sure, sure.
You know, I think there's definitely value in having onsite, in-person conversations, absolutely. But I think we're talking about, we're talking about website, it's all virtual, what we're talking about. I don't, I think we could, I think we can engage with our departments and offices through the virtual method and get the improvements and the changes taken care of that we may without having to be onsite.
So, how many departments do we have? Somebody's got no.
Upwards of 20?
So, I think you're going to need the four days. That's my issue. Three days allowed, if you're saying it's averaging an hour, and I think it's a little bit longer, that would have given 12, 12-hour segments, plus the stakeholder meeting, plus the 14 beginning and the wrap-up. So, I'm thinking that four days virtually is probably what we would end up with. So, we don't short people on time.
It would also give some time if there were departments that we identified that we would like to bring back, give them their own individual time, but maybe bring a couple of them back together to work on a very specific use case.
Would you still virtually, you would still meet with each department individually, correct?
That's what those hours are. That's correct.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, I just wasn't sure by your last, your last comment when you said about bringing those individual departments back, I just want to make sure that they would start out at meeting individually and then if, if I'm understanding correctly, if you're identifying some other things, you could go back to them.
Yeah, and say, you know, at this hour on maybe day four, we're going to have a workshop, a work session and we're going to invite, you know, just for, as an example, we're going to bring emergency management and the sheriff's office in together or something like, to that effect because we identified something.
And you do have 20 departments, but there's a lot of other stuff on our website that is not shared by a department. I'm looking at a medical examiner.
Courts.
Resources, I mean, maybe, maybe some of those could be grouped in, in, you know, some of the auditor's office, I think, is in charge of, you know, we could figure that out. We should, we should deal with those, but maybe fold those into the most, most relevant departments, especially boards and state, federal, local resources.
And just one other note, sometimes there are departments that have very distinct divisions that would also need their own time.
But the basic structure is going to stay the same?
Yes.
So, so what are, so what are you going to, what would you do differently from planning and development to the auditor's office? Are you going in and looking at the content on each department page and, and how it's organized? Or are we talking about making larger changes, like the search function?
That's one of the conversations that we have too. One of the reasons we want to have the folks look at not only the front end, we're looking, you know, typically at the public-facing side, but there's the backend too, where there might be a lot of drafts or old documents, getting that stuff cleaned up to improve that search and then when the design and the changes are made, re-indexing so that the search is enhanced because all of that material that, let's face it, we're going to find things from 2012, no matter, you know, how hard we try to clean it up. And again, that's, you know, some of the questions, but overall, department to department, the structure is the same. Ideally, we start with that questionnaire, they come in, we sit down, you know, they've got, we want to hear what they have, we've got questions that we're going to ask, we'll go through, you know, page by page, we'll begin as the departments, as they do move through, we'll start to see trends and we'll say, you know, well, we noticed in a couple of the other departments, this happened or that, that happened and, you know, let's talk about what, what some of the things that you want to address are. So, although there is a structure, every department is different.
And yeah, I'm scrolling through right now and I'm saying, why, why do we still have blank on here? You know, our community, you know, they're just, yeah, there's, there's more than just the office and department tasks under government, there's a whole lot more to look at. And I guess that's my question. If you're just looking at department heads, you're going to miss a bunch of that stuff unless somebody sits down and assigns some of these to the, to the department head who has the most to do with it, if you know what I mean. There's still things I don't know about the books.
It's tricky because if we, depending on how empowered the departments are, if we meet with staff, often we hear, well, we have to get approval from the department head. If we meet with the department head, we hear, well, I have to go ask my staff. So, again, each department is, is going to be unique and depends on how empowered they are, how involved they are, and what that relationship looks like in each, each customer's going to be different.
So, what I'm hearing is that our prep on the ground is going to be really important in terms of how much we get out of those four days or whatever it is that we look at. So, I think that really comes to IT and I don't, I'm not on the website committee, so I don't know if that group could, could do that kind of look at the website and say, here's some issues that might fall through the cracks unless we make sure they don't. That doesn't sound really good, if you know what I mean? Because I don't want to fall through the cracks here if we just focus on what does a department head want on her or his specific page.
I think, I think it comes down to each department and office as much as it does on IT. I don't know if we're talking about, you know, somebody needing to sit down, like, schedule a time to go to each department or each office and during a staff meeting and say, here's the questionnaire, here's your website on the screen, let's walk through it together. I don't, I don't know if that's what it looks like.
And don't forget to look at your boards and commissions because that's in a different place sometimes. Don't forget to look at other things that relate to your department.
Yeah. And I think that's what we ran into last time. Each, each department was responsible for their own page and some departments were more engaged and others were like, oh, it's fine, I don't need to do anything different. So, this is a good opportunity and maybe the thoughts have changed since then, you know, and I think the pandemic has changed it for all of us. So, since we've done most of the work in the last couple of years online, maybe there are different opinions about how they want their page to, you know, represent their department. So, I really think this is a good opportunity for that.
This is Lisa, I've got one other question regards to the survey, particularly for internal, and I understand that you could send it to everybody, so not only department heads, but other staff as well. So, when you, when you culminate that information, are you then, are you looking at it just in general or are you also looking at it by department's page? So that when you go into conversations, you know, where you could say, well, from the surveys, these are some of the feedback that we got for this particular page. We've got not only the in-general working for the website, but also for usability for the individual page. Do you get that specific with that as well?
Sometimes, and we do do it by department, but then we're, we use our form center. We have a demo site where we create the form and send it out electronically. So, even though it's focused on the department, asking them to kind of focus and look at themselves, when we collect that data, it comes into an Excel file and we are able to see all of the responses from all of the departments and we're be, we're able to pick up trends and, and things that we need to discuss there. So, although it is focused on departments, we also do open it up to the.
Okay, thank you. Here's a simple, here's just a simple example, kind of thing I'm talking about. If you look at government, you look under offices and departments, you've got auditor elections, okay? Look under the services tab, you come with drainage districts. I don't know if the drainage district, if that's tied that to auditors or if there's separate information there that the auditor should look at. That's just an example. I think there's other things like motor vehicle registration, is that tied to the treasures page or is that a separate, separate page under services?
Yes.
So, we got to go through and make sure, that's why I say if there's something that somebody should look at that may not be actually on their department page, is there stuff that's, you can find three or four different ways in this website and I don't know if there's consistency among the content on those three or four different ways, places you find some things.
And that's our goal is to try to bring it all together. A lot of times, back, you know, one of the things you'll hear us talk about is that we want to not pay so much attention to the organizational structure of the county because the end-user doesn't really understand which department does what. So, we'll, we'll often hear a department say, oh, this has to be. to be here because we're responsible for it. Although that is true, what are people looking at? How are they going to look for it? And what are the key terms in the, the layman's view of finding that information?
Usually you may have both because your customer may be another county.
Yeah, yeah. And internally as well. Your departments use your website as, as well.
They do. So, you really need, so if it's something that, that our external customers need, you need to have that in a way that might be more accessible to them. But don't, don't lose track of the fact that we have both internal and external customers. And they go about it two very different ways.
Yeah.
Any additional questions? Discussion and consideration. So, if we have a motion or other questions that we want to ask or for the duration.
I, I just have sense that with the right work done ahead of time, that the four day, to make sure we get a look, good look at everything, that the four, four day virtual engagement can give us a lot, give us something close for half the month as a four day onsite. And I don't think three days is going to do it, given all the content of the website. That's my personal thought. So, I don't know if we want to discuss or if we're ready for motion.
Yeah, I think it's just going to be the time arranging those virtual meetings to make sure folks have that time set to do it.
Well, I guess my, I guess my question is, do we need it? We need what? Do, do we need, do we need to, do we need to do this right now at all? I guess that's my question. So, you've been on website committee? So, I would really like to hear your thoughts on that. Well, I, I'm just, I guess I'm just asking, are, are, are we having difficulty using our website? Are we hearing from people that they're having difficulty using our website? I. It's a, it's a, it's a big website with a lot of information. I'm not saying it couldn't benefit from it. I'm just wondering if it's something that we need to do now? If it makes sense to revisit it? Further on down the road? I, I, I don't know. But I tell you, you know how I use the website? I go to the search box and whatever the thing is I'm looking for, I type in the search box because that's how I find the thing I'm looking for.
So, you think the search works pretty well?
I think it works pretty well. I think it comes up with a whole lot of old stuff. Like I said, I, I'm not saying that we couldn't benefit from it.
So, I guess I might have assumed that the website committee was recommending this. Maybe I'm jumping to some conclusions. What, what has the website committee come up with? What is the thought?
That was the main complaint from the website committee was the search and the navigation. Several, several people mentioned that, that they had heard it from their departments as well. And that's the only reason I'm bringing it to the board. Like, do we continue with the refresh and just put a new skin on it? Or do we really dig down and make it function better for us?
So. If you're talking about search function, I don't think. If there's old stuff, it's not doing anybody any good, why are we keeping it on the website? I mean, we know that. Why are we paying consultants to, what are consultants going to do to help us with that as opposed to us ourselves saying, get this stuff off the website? Now, I don't know how to do it. I don't know where it resides. But that's not what consultants are going to do. They're going to come and just tell us the same thing. They're going to come in and say, hey, get that old stuff you don't need off your website so your search function works better and people are more satisfied with it. Well, they're not going to do that for us. We're going to do that for us, correct?
Jennifer, are you still on, or Barb?
I, I am. So, the, the answer is yes, you could absolutely do it yourself. You can have those conversations yourself. Who will do it? Again, if we are making the most use of those meetings, then we're able to do some of that in real time. Often, if somebody says, yeah, I'll go back and do that, you know, I'll, I'll work on that next week. Next week comes and goes and, you know, something else happened and, and they never got to it or never went back to it. And then, you know, just, just, you know, sometimes it just takes hearing it from subject matter experts in order to make it real. There's a lot of pride with the information that people have up on the website. It's been there, it's always been there. You know, there's, there's so many different things that we hear as to why somebody wants to keep it. Well, somebody asked us for that once and, you know, three years ago, so we need to keep it up there. It's just those coaching moments and those conversations that, that we can bring to it.
So, at the, at the end of the day, so you will have helped us clear out all that stuff in the background that's.
That would be the goal.
Did I hear a yes?
I said that would be the goal.
But how much stuff is there?
There's stuff back from 2012 yet that comes up and when you search. Like, I searched for an RFP the other day and I got the RFP for 2012 for something from engineering. And I didn't want to see that. But to find what I was looking for, it took, it took a lot of time scrolling down and then clicking more buttons and. And yes, the search function isn't, isn't very efficient. And we, some of us don't know, you know, if we see a department that's saving a lot of stuff, well, we need it. We have to keep it on there. Well, we don't question the reasoning behind that because we think that, you know, if that department is telling us they need it, then there's reasons per their department why they need it. But we just need to make sure that it is needed and that, you know, we can get rid of the garbage when we're searching for what we actually want to find.
This is not an exact number, but you have somewhere around 545 published pages and about 166 what we call draft pages. So, those are pages that are no longer active. And then if I look at your document center, again, just, just numbers here, 99, seven short of 10,000 documents.
10,000 documents.
And I can't tell how many of those are published, not published. You know, I'm just looking at some high level statistics right now. But those are the things that we have the conversations about.
Well, and I think to do it, you know, to really get hold of that, you need some guidelines developed that say, this is what we keep in line, this is what we don't keep beyond a certain time and why. It's almost like a record retention policy for a website.
I don't, or you have that happening with each area, like an archive or, I don't know, something.
Well, I, I, I think, I think the 545 published pages and almost 10,000 documents answered my question.
Well, maybe if you do this refresh with this, addressing this moving forward, you'll have the tools of, okay, how, how do we keep it so we're not getting to the point of this? Maybe, maybe not because technology is always changing. I, you know, I don't want to pretend I know the extent of it all.
You know, if we got some kind of guidelines, guidance from the consultants about how to keep those, kind of sift through those 10,000 documents, what should be kept on the website and why? Because, just because somebody thinks they have to keep a record. Well, it may be a hard copy. It may be a, you know, on some kind of digital, other digital storage someplace. You keep it on the website so people can easily access. If there's stuff that isn't being accessed very often and people don't really need to easily access and that's not going to save you time by having it on there, why have it on there? You know, that kind of guidance for us, we, I think would be helpful.
Yeah, it would be helpful to know which of the technical ones that are recently digitalized that we're trying to be more accessible and transparent with.
But this, but I don't know. There's probably stuff on the website that nobody's ever going to access, share the website. And that's the kind of stuff we need to say or sell them. And that's kind of stuff we need to say, get that out of there. Then the search function becomes more, more reasonable. So, what I, Barb, what I was hearing from you is the things that you heard were the navigation and the search function, not necessarily what the content is on a page.
Well, it was, they didn't dig into the, the content. They just said, this website is impossible. And then that led to the discussion, yeah, when you type in the search, you know, you don't get what you're looking for. I have to click four times before I finally find what I need. And, you know, other websites I can click twice and there I am. So, I think it's the levels of clicking and the searching and, you know, the broad statement when I asked for clarification, that's what I got.
And I know that there's some things that your staff can do and help with if there's a, a change on the homepage or a change on a page. Your staff are able to do some of those things. So, I would just not think that if, if that's possible to maybe say, these are the stated departments. Now, these are the kind of things that our staff can do versus the things that we would need a consultant to do. So, we're not taking the consultant's time that we're paying for and having them do things that would be fairly easy for your staff to do.
We can go in and change images and change wording. We can't change the format or the navigation. That's built into the site itself. And if we, I guess we don't even have the code to do that. But if we attempted to do that, we don't know, you know, what the relationship is between things on the website. If we did get access to it, we could easily break it.
Yeah, but that, that everybody does know the things that you can do and make sure that you do those rather than take, pay consultants some different.
Yes, yes.
So, what's, so. Maybe asking Barb to work with the consultants and come back with the proposed contract? If that's the direction we're going? Or? Based on their own site or virtual? Right, right. I think that's what she's wanting is what do we want from her? Do we want to do the three or four day? Do we want to do the two, three or four days of virtual? I think that's what she's wanting so that she.
I think if we started with the three day and then left the fourth day as an option, that might be a good fit for what we're trying to do.
I, I like that idea. Also, though, I think that. We've had a lot of discussion here. David, we've probably taken more time than we were spent talking about the website. But we've talked about, you know, what are, what are the problem areas? I'm not that interested in the skin, quite frankly. I mean, it's free and it refreshes the look of it, fine. But what I'm really interested in is that the search function works and then we get rid of, and, and the way to do that is to get rid of old stuff that isn't, shouldn't be on the website. And the reason, and the way to do that is to really dig in and what's in it and get, develop some guidance. I, Barb, I just think that you really need to work with the consultants to manage it to make sure that we're getting, and with everybody, to make sure that we're getting what we want out of that. But it's functionality, but it's navigation and it's the search function. That's what I'm hearing is what everybody's concerned about. Not how it looks. Three days virtual is what I was thinking. And maybe, maybe that does leave time to do, let's say, if you come out through that and say, we've got this, but an onsite day would really be helpful. Maybe we could add in an onsite day. Let's try a virtual because that's the one thing for the top.
And I think the questionnaire might bring even more comments about the website. Not all departments are being represented by the website committee. So, we haven't heard from all departments. And I think the questionnaire from Civic Plus is an excellent idea. It might bring things out that no one even thought of.
Do we know, Jennifer, what, what is your calendar? Like, do you know when your team might be available to start?
Oh, well, we would be definitely be looking into 2022, whether that be January, later in January or in February. We would have to take a look at, at, to see if, what that, what that would look like.
Ready for motion? Sure.
I would love that we direct the director of information technology to work with consultant to bring to us a contract for a three day virtual engagement with an option for an additional day later, either onsite or virtual. Three days at $4,500.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Markin, I, Basil, I, Edith, I. Thank you and thank you, probably Jennifer could be here today and answering all of our questions as well. Thank you, Barb.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, board.
Oh, sure. We're going to take a two minute break. $4,500, yeah. $4,500, yeah. Thank you. We'll now resume. Next we have up is discussion of consideration of the Stewart County Supervisors filing account with the Iowa Utilities Board, this is something supervisor work can be brought. Yes, for us?
Because I think people know there are two pipelines that are being proposed for carbon sequestration, transportation, sequestration, Heartland-Greenlight Pipeline and Midwest Carbon Express Pipeline would both go through Stewart County. There has been discussion about whether eminent, whether the pipeline companies would pursue eminent domain. And clearly, the core line says that eminent domain is for condemnation of private property may be necessary for a public improvement. And there's considerable discussion about whether a proven sequestration fits the, fits the definition there. I've also been looking at chapter 6A, which is eminent domain. And there is particularly a the session on condemnation of agricultural land, public use or public purpose or public improvement does not include the authority to condemn agricultural land for private development purposes unless the owner of the agricultural land consents for the condemnation. So I think there's a lot of question over whether eminent domain can be used for either of these projects during the first public hearing, which was the Summit Carpet Solutions one that was held here. The question was asked whether they would be pursuing eminent domain. The person who was speaking for the pipeline said that was not their goal, did not rule it out, as I recall. So two counties I've noticed have submitted comments on the I U B's website, Pursues and Iowa Counties. I thought there was a third one, but I couldn't find it this morning. But at least two counties have submitted a comment. And it's a very short place where you can put a comment in. So I didn't write a full resolution here. I just wrote a motion to be, for us to consider. Basically, that we file a comment with the Iowa Utilities Board opposing the use of eminent domain for acquiring land for the construction of these pipelines. So we can discuss it or I can, I can make the motion. Want to discuss it first? Okay, I would strike you on a supervisor's file comment with the Iowa Utilities Board opposing use of the eminent domain for acquiring land for the construction of the Heartland-Greenlight Pipeline, Navigator CO2 Ventures and the Midwest Carbon Express Pipeline, Summit Carpet Solutions, that are proposed to transport hazardous liquid through Stewart County.
I would second. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that forward.
Sure. I'd like to thank Supervisor Thason for noticing that a couple counties have done this. So I thought it was a great idea and very definitely something the I U B should consider.
Next up, we have discussion of consideration of replacing the risk, excuse me, the risk manager position. For either.
Good morning, good morning. I know, I was checking because sometimes I'll say good morning and it's afternoon. So, good morning, board. So we have had a position within the H R section of the Board of Supervisors office vacant since the end of May. I have handled the duties of that position and really taken a look at, it was a new position back in March of eight, you mean, I believe. At March of 18, we added it. You know, taking a look at what, what worked. There were some H R functions built into the risk manager position that were never transitioned to the risk manager. I kept those. There, there's a lot of work on the work comp side and light duty side working not only with our designated positions, but the departments and our I M W C A, which is our insurance carrier. So I just really took a look at what, what we, what I view we need as far as H R functions, different things. We also, what I built into this is we did have an intern. So I kind of built in some of the stuff that the intern did. The other piece of it, I have put the safety piece, kind of drawn that out of the position. That is a very unique piece that doesn't necessarily mix with the other H R duties. So I did, I do want to have a discussion with the board at a budget work session about possibly some consulting for the safety piece. We do have resources through our work comp insurance, our liability insurance, that this position, whatever it is within H R can work with and work with the departments. That's what we utilize before. So it took me a long time to figure out, you know, what, what, what I thought would work, what we needed based on the functions of the, of the H R piece. And then I put together an H R coordinator. I did talk to a couple cities that utilize a coordinator instead of a risk manager to be that person in between the insurance carrier or different things like that. One thing that is unique to our H R, we do handle all the liability insurance and have, a lot of counties don't have that piece under their H R umbrella. And there has been, I will say, it, it depends on the time of year. Sometimes there's a lot of, we self-insure on a lot of pieces. So sometimes there's just a lot of time spent working with the department, getting estimates, getting paperwork. There's a lot of different things to do. And then other times there aren't, aren't many things. So it just depends, just depends. We've had a lot in the last few months. There's the, you've probably seen the claims, we've had a lot of claims paid out of our insurance service. I don't know if you have some questions? If we transition this to an H R coordinator, I, I don't anticipate hiring an intern. I think there would be enough capacity. We did use, our intern worked about 15 hours a week. And then from mid-May to mid-August, 40 hours. And we used all, all those hours during that time, the busy time of year, so.
How much is the salary compared to that of the H R generalist?
It's, it's lower. It, it was, this one came in at about a grade seven, the generalist is a 10. You know, I also threw on, do we need two generals? I don't think I need that level of a position to split off the duties. Some, I think the city of Baton Rouge has two generals and they split everything down the middle. We used to have an H R assistant, so I did take a look at that job description internet. That was a, that was more of an entry level H R position. This would be the next step and then our generalist is an exempt level. I don't, I don't see needing that exempt level H R position. I think this is more of a coordinator, training, tracking things, working with departments, making sure we got those pieces, doing the, we do a lot of salary calculations, all the longevity stuff, it uses different pieces like that. That's kind of what I built into this.
So this is position, add more duties from what the previous, under as just the risk manager position was? Or is it?
So we should, we should have these functions under the risk manager.
Right, okay. So I can go through that. There are, I did not put in the, handling the liability insurance renewal. I anticipate just doing that myself if, if we make this change. So they did the safety and risk prevention programs. Number two. Number two. Number three. Number four. And number five.
Yeah, those, that's.
That's, that's pretty much what was under the risk manager position.
Two through five.
Two through five.
So where did the other ones come from then? Who's doing which ones now?
A lot of our intern was doing it and I'm doing a lot of it.
Well, can you do it by number?
Sure. Number six, I do all the updating of the job descriptions. And then the generalist does, between the generalist and myself, updates the website, internet. Number seven, the intern was helping the generalist do that. I do all the salary surveys. I do all, gather all the information for kind of compensation and benefit analysis. Number eight, I put in there just so we have somebody else to help assist them with routine things the intern was able to help if we, once we got trained with general information. And then nine, the generalist and the intern, the intern did all most of the climbing when we had an intern working 15.
And number one?
That is just to help with the extra. One of the things I did from our former generalist, they said it was, you know, there were times, there was a lot of, one, one position wasn't enough. So I tried to help as much as I can. The intern kind of took that off, but it just depended on whether the intern was 15 hours, 40 hours. It got to be a lot. We did enhance quite a few programs over the last two or three years. We did, you know, our employee recognition program, we did a complete overhaul. We've done some performance management updates. Our training program, it's been a whole because of COVID. But that does take time to coordinate and implement. Moving forward, we're going to have some diversity and inclusion initiatives that are going to add some additional duties on H R. I would imagine that that's, that's where that will come from.
I think the problem I'm having with this is, I'm, it is that it kind of spreads a whole bunch of stuff among three people. Instead of saying employee recognition training is this position's, something is this position's responsibility. It seems like you're just kind of spreading a lot of stuff over through people.
And I can take it out of some of the generalists and transition it to this position, but I don't think it just takes one person to do that. I think it takes more than one. I mean, we had, I mean, I'll be honest, between the, the generalist, myself and the intern, all three of us do benefit administration, depending on different things. The, the generalist handles the bulk of the, the onboarding and the employee open enrollment fees. But it really does take all three to do that. So there typically is some overlap in, in H R job descriptions. If you go out and look at, you know, the city of Ames, they have H R officers. They've got two levels of H R officers. They have some of the same things in those job descriptions. They also have a H R analyst that handles a lot of different things. You know, you do have that overlap so that if, you know, there are times of the year where it does take more than one person to handle benefits and different things like that. I do, I do all the benefit renewals, but the generalist handles all the administration. And we do all administration on ourselves. We do not have the insurance companies do the enrollments. We don't have our broker do the enrollment. So we, we do administer everything internally and I don't really want to change that because I think then there's, there could possibly be some lifetime and getting things done. We had an insurance company that used to do all their own enrollments. We were constantly correcting different things. So that, that, that's where that piece is at. We do our own cover administration. We handle everything internal. We don't outsource a lot of that. You know, it was hard. I do go out and look at other counties, how their structures are set up, their different positions. Johnson County, different things like that. A lot of their job descriptions are similar with the different positions that they have. Lake County, I've looked at Lake County a lot and the, the structure that they have. They don't handle the liability insurance within H R. So that is a different piece. And that's why I thought it's more a coordinator piece instead of a H R journalist. The more coordinating, working with different entities to get those in place, so. I did look at the generalist. I'm also trying to figure out if we pull up the safety piece, how we can make that work somewhat budget-wise. And I think by having a lower level H R physician, not filling the H R intern, does give us a little bit of funds to put towards a, a safety consultant. I've had some, done some research, met with some, a lot of cities use I A M U. There's a lot of cities that are partnered together to have a safety coordinator. There is not that option at this point, so I haven't brought anything to the board. I'm still exploring that and I want to have that discussion at a later time.
How much was the intern budget for?
$15,000.
And how much will you save with the lower?
$15,000.
Another 15, you'll save on this position. So you've got 30 there. Let me ask, does this position need to be full-time? For recruitment purposes, as far as to get like a.
Both that and there's enough work. I mean, if we, if we eliminate the intern that was working 40 hours from May till August and another 15 on a regular basis, we have the, the the portions of the risk manager job. I mean, I mean, I do, I mean, I can try to do it for shorter time. If the board, I don't think half-time is enough. Half-time is extremely difficult to recruit too.
What other county spend if I am needed in the safety coordination?
Full-time, 130 grand. That's what the city of Ames contract is.
Maybe less, city of.
In their H R department? Or just?
The city itself, I'm trying to say.
They have a little different, I think it's like seven or 800 F Ts. 280, close to 280. If you look at H R, it's one for, best practice is one for 100 is what they say. I know best practice isn't everything, but we do more than just true H R.
What I was trying to figure out is how much the contract by me was.
I, I was hoping that we could, the mark, the person that came and I had a discussion with him. He had a few cities that are interested. They usually get about 10 or 11 people to go in together for one safety consultant. They don't have enough is the issue. He's got interest from other cities in this area that don't have that piece. There's just not enough, there's not 10 or 11. So I don't know if there's an option to do 50% and get five. I, I haven't explored that option. The other pieces we could work with I M W C A on some of the safety pieces. They're not, it's not the same as having the true safety consultant. But we just, you know, have to have that person to work with them and work with the departments too. And we, we made some progress. We just, for not where I wanted this to be. So I am kind of trying to change directions a little bit. I do handle all the work comp right now. And I think that, that needs to be under H R. I think there's a lot of, you know, work restrictions, light duty. We work with I M W C A a lot, they call, we, we work with our designated physicians on different things. So that's something that that I, I never transitioned off to the risk manager that was initially thought that we would do that, so.
I guess I, I don't feel like, and I appreciate you talking to me earlier this morning too. I feel like I don't have a good handle on what everyone's functions are currently. I would, I would like a little bit more time just to kind of figure out what we're looking at. Because like you said, we have talked. I would, I would like a little bit more time just to kind of figure out what we're looking at, because like you said, we have talked about diversity and inclusion. Person. What? What does? What does that look, I don't, I don't, I want to make sure that we're. That I I understand what we're doing and what everyone else is doing.
And I didn't want to go and fill the risk manager position without redoing, you know, relooking at things. I mean, the the need is there, it's it's a lot. There's a lot of different things we could do, we just don't have. You know, I'm missing, I'm missing that full time position. But we can, we can take a look at at different things. I don't think we need. Any higher level, additional higher level HR physicians, it just needs somebody to to also. Help with the overflow, which is what, you know, when you have a little bit lower level HR position, whether it's an assistant or coordinator and analyst. They kind of help. The director and the. Generalist or the the HR officer do those things. That's what we use the intern. And and we did use, I mean. I I can definitely see, I can see when we don't have an intern helping with those things. The additional workload, so, I mean, if the board wants me to hold off, that's that's fine, I can hold off. I don't know if I can hold off till July. With with some different things. No, no, I just didn't want to, I mean, I didn't want to go forward and fill that risk manager position without changing and trying to see what what would work better. How could we do that, different things like that, so we did a pretty big structure change back in twenty fifteen. With with the revamp of the organization within the board, it added some additional duties, so that's that's kind of where we. We we branched off to get the intern and help. Do that. I'm pretty hands on, I do handle a lot of things, but there are times where. I do need to probably delegate a few more things that that I have just to focus on the higher level. A higher level pieces, so.
Would you be proposing changes to your job description or to the HR general's job description? You're you're not really moving anything.
No, it's just more assisting.
We lay the three of them side by side and I didn't have time to do that.
Mine covers everything. The director role always has over, you know, has all the functions in it. And then the generalist has that they manage the performance management, that the director over oversees everything, it's more the overseeing piece. The generalist has the managing, the coordinator will assist the generalist with that. I don't have the generalist supervising the coordinator because I don't think that's. That's not the correct structure. I don't see that in other cities or counties. But I do, it's more of an assisting role instead of managing those functions. And that's. That's kind of how I. Have it set up.
Since we. Since you haven't had that risk manager in place first, so how has that increased? Your workload, not having that person. In that current position or say with intern, we haven't had an intern for quite a while, how has that increased your workload from when they work here?
Here, it it's pushed things off, so those things come, like the work comp and different things like that come. Come first and then. Like as far as safety, we haven't had safety committee meetings. I I don't, I mean, and and the other piece of it, there's a lot of other things. COVID has played a part in it, or. The meetings and stuff like that, we're doing some different things. I've just taken on the additional. Things, I just can't get to. Certain things, I I I don't have all the job descriptions updated for the comp study, I don't have the comp study started. And then there's been a lot, I mean, I've had some job vacancies getting those filled, so that that's played a part in it too. But. So, but I do all the claims, I do all the working with. The sheriff's office is probably the main thing for the self insurance, the insurance reserve with the vehicle. Accidents and different things like that, that we do that. I did all the, I did the renewals, got those done this summer, so. Worked with, I or. Not Tedesco, sorry. On that, so. I mean, the 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 main focus is the job we're getting done. Other thing is just, other things are getting shut to the side. Now, the other thing that has played a part, we haven't been able to do our training stuff in person, so that'll add. A few more things, we've had to put that on hold. There are things we we put on hold because of COVID. That we're going to kind of start bringing back and doing things, so we were able to shuffle a few of those things. I will say having an intern, it does, they come and go, so it does take a little bit of trading, having a regular position would. Try to create a little bit more. Everybody or whatever, but that doesn't mean they're not going to come and go either, so I mean, there is staff turnover that happens, so.
Where would you opt this person?
I've had some discussions with Jovi, I mean, I I really think it needs to be within our office, so I have really interviewed that. I don't like that it's not an enclosed. Thing, so. I've had some discussions with Jovi about different things that we could possibly do that would get them an actual. Enclosed office, so if they're working with employees or work comp, talking about injuries and different things like that, it's not out in the open. But that's where I'm, I don't, I don't want them offside, I don't want them in a different area. There's too much interaction, that just doesn't work very well, so I would utilize that. For with the intern. For the, for the short term, until we find a better solution. We don't have a lot of space, that our our file room has a lot of space if we can. Maneuver some things around, do some things, but. For the short term, I would put them. For the interns have. There's a lot of stuff that goes, I mean, the reporting to the the end of the year is the busiest time for me as far as reporting. We do all the ACA returns and different things like that, so.
We would sort of talk about the recruiting, because I know that that was.
And we we.
Certain times of year that.
Yeah.
And the trainings were onboarding.
I have that, that that's that first thing, it's that first catchall, it's like, you know what? We did have our intern go and sit in some interviews just to have HR there, they have a different perspective and and. The department's really, I think, appreciate that. I did sit in some interviews this summer as much as my schedule allows to do that. Seasonal time is really busy doing background checks, pre-employment checks, onboarding, getting everything done. So there are times of year that are really, I did build that in here. If we don't have an intern to help with that, we have somebody else that can jump in and do that. And fill in and take care of that stuff. I mean, I do think there needs to be overlap on some.
Sure, sure.
But there'll be people that take care of, you know, the generalist handles the wellness committee. And I I anticipate that staying, kind of working with employee wellness and benefits, but then this physician would do the safety. You know, certain things, we've tried different things over the years. The liability insurance was under the director of external operations for a few years. And they were the safety chair before we had a risk manager, so. We have moved things around a little bit over the years. I don't know what the best solution is. And this is just like I said, a few months of looking back, seeing what works and what different works, where our gaps are.
Sure.
It is, it's. It seems to me. That the primary. Focus of this is the safety and risk management and associated duties and then. Assisting with other things. Okay, if number one doesn't seem to be the primary focus to me.
No.
I'd move it down.
And I could do that.
I put the things in the primary focus.
At the top.
Maybe even talk about that in general definition of work more in front. Somehow, because that's that's where I'm feeling, it's just everything. And and when it says coordinate the county's safety and risk prevention programs, how is that different than what you were contracted for? I mean, you're contracting for somebody to develop the safety.
And this person would work with that contractor, so.
Work with that.
So the contractor would actually write the programs, would have the expertise, have the OSHA guide, knowledge, different things like that. This position would work with them to make sure.
Would implement.
Would kind of be the the in between with the departments and working and doing some different things. Now, I will say the city of Banktony. When they have that, they created this position probably three or four years ago to do that, they utilize IMWCA pretty heavily for the development of their stuff. And and the safety training and tracking that training and different things like that, so it seems to work well for them. They don't have the. When we did the risk manager, I did with the, I didn't have any OSHA, I'm not an expert in OSHA, but that was the focus. When we did that, that would be the safety consulting piece, the OSHA expertise, what do we need to do to make sure we're in compliance with program? What, you know, different things like that. This this position would handle the training, coordinating that training, doing things like that.
So would that be an ongoing contract?
It's just.
Just they, they write the programs and then once a year, we just make sure those programs still match up with OSHA guidelines or.
What what they do, what what my understanding they do, IAMU does. With when they have ten or eleven cities or counties together, then then they. They keep everything up to date. The cost is a lot lower than a full time city, Ames has the full time. Consultant through IAMU. I'm not sure we need the full time, that's why I I haven't got it, I'm thinking partnering. With somebody just to get that, I think there's going to be a lot of work upfront. But once that's done, I think it's just managing. At that point, it might be something that we just do a review once a year to make sure that the guidance hasn't changed, different things like that. Training requirements haven't changed. I I just think the initial piece to get us. Where we need to be is going to take a lot of focus and that's what matters then on, I don't think we would need, that's why I haven't got the full time. Safety consultant. I just don't know if there's a full. I mean. And and with the risk manager, we put different things in there. In there to. To add to that, so we have that need, the liability insurance piece and different things like that, so.
I don't. Can make a suggestion.
Sure.
What I want to do is look at all three side by side. And and have some discussion with you, and I'd like to do that in the next week if possible. Maybe we give ourselves a couple of weeks to get that done and bring this back. And 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 I think then we'll probably. You know, having had a more of a chance to really talk with you about what's it going to look like.
And that's fine, my goal is, my goal is to have somebody recruited by the end of January, so we can push that back.
We could see it, I think it depends on schedules and. You know, what we can. Spend a little bit of time chatting about this. We can do it next week if we did, or we could put it on next week, take it off if we're not ready.
You just table it to next week, is that what you want to do? Do you want to disable it or?
No. We don't say that word.
Okay, sorry.
I'm going to have to take it off the table.
Yeah.
Sorry.
We'll we'll just reset it.
You know, we put it back on.
Sure.
Down to that work.
Yeah, yeah. We'll put on either, what are you looking at, the twenty first? Or the twenty eighth or look at.
And then this week is just so full and.
I know that's.
Together, that's the problem.
That's right, that's right.
And I think next week for everybody, are you going to be here next week?
Monday, Wednesday, I'm in bargaining, okay. Possibly, I don't know, I mean, I don't start until ten o'clock, so.
Would it be better to, for time wise, to have it on the twenty eighth? Yeah.
I'll just put it on the twenty eighth. I mean, if if I have an opportunity, I will start on an opportunity by Thursday afternoon. Individually and kind of just look at the three, but.
I'm just looking at the holiday.
Yeah.
With that speed flow on there, I know my week is going to be jam packed.
Yeah. Do it as soon as you can.
There we go.
Put it on machine again.
Okay, using our agenda, we are now in acting now. So the next several. Ones are related to the opioid settlement, so item number was it four, five. Six and seven, I'm just going to speak to them collectively and then motions can be done separately. So if you recall, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, I brought forth the participating involved, the distributor and opioid settlement. I think with a week later or less, we had another meeting with ISAP and the attorneys on this and. They had said, you know, if you submitted your your opioid settlements, that's fine, although we've added some other language and after having talked with Ethan. He had said, you know, I'd like this week for them for us to vote on this and resubmit. On the participation for distributor and Jansen. The section that are new is under the. Participation agreements, it's number two, that language was not in the previous. Participation agreement. Basically just talking about that, one of the things that we need to have is the MLU, it's that memorandum of understanding, which is. That's what I said, one of the next ones that just really references. That the half the funds are what the state of Iowa have for locals and some of the things that go on with that. This also puts in language. That should the I O allocation memorandum of understanding fail to become effective, this election and release shall be deemed void and no claim shall be released, so it's just adding that particular language. In there, so that's what for numbers four and five, as I said, then number six is we have to have a memorandum of understanding. And then the last one is. Is the resolution. Of the local government settlement. Again, they said we didn't have to submit a resolution, they recommended it and after my discussions with Ethan, we just decided to let's just do it all and we're going to resubmit. Not only the two participation settlements with the MLU and the resolution. To the entities involved in in. Questions that you have, I know I culminate them both together, but they're all intertwined, I probably would be here to explain it together versus individually. And this will hopefully be the last of it. Our last meeting, they have one county that had yet not signed on, there were nineteen cities. I know one of the cities is doing theirs tonight, was identified Ames did not, yeah, yeah, so Ames is is voting on it. Tonight, and I think the other counties have reached out to the other. Cities as well on this. And the deadline to have all of this done and submitted is January second, so the timeframe is coming up quickly.
Well. Oh, I just want to say thank you. I know it's been a lot of meetings, a lot of time has gone into. Getting all of this done and I spent with. County attorney's office and and everything, so thanks for. Doing all of this work. I'm sure it's not been the most fascinating topic.
Well, some yes and some, if somebody, yes, and some of it, I mean, it's it's one of these all the legal lingo and I'm like, gosh, I wish I went to law school. I hate being the one in the meeting to always say, can you say that on layman's terms? So with that. We have motions for various different ones.
Yeah, I I would move. Approval of participating in the distributor opioid settlement. Second.
But if it's second, it's face off.
I.
Merkin.
I.
Ted is I.
Google participating in the Jansen opioid.
The move is second is Merkin. Faceoff.
I.
Ted is I.
I would move. Approval of participating in Iowa State Local Allocation Memorandum of Understanding, second.
The move is second is face off.
I.
Merkin. Ted is I.
Resolution number twenty two dash four six, the local government settlement.
The move is second is Merkin.
I.
Faceoff, I. Ted is I. Thank you. We have, now we have departmental reports with Mark Steinbeck.
Hello again, board.
Hi, Mark.
Hi, so I just wanted to go over some, we've been busy, but I just wanted to touch on some of the the more labor intensive projects we've been working on. And well, I guess we can start with the graphs. I think this is always interesting. So the first graph that you see is of the website hits. And usually, and I don't know, can you see the bottom of that? It doesn't show up on my screen. There we go. So usually. We have jail and. We have jail information is the 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 site that gets the most hits and, you know, that can change depending on what's going on in the quarters during. During the year within the county, but this time, Stray County Attorney's site has been hit the most. And I think this is probably due, we can't dig down to see exactly what item they're clicking on. But I suspect there's been a couple of high profile cases they've worked on in the last quarter, because this is from September to December. So I suspect that's why that, the county attorney site got the most hits. Property tax, you know, those were due end of September, so that's why that is some. Second in the most hits and then we had school board elections and then jail information. So. Those four are generally the most common, sometimes mixed around a little bit. But then also I had a a graph showing just basically our help desk hits. And not surprisingly, so the the large red quadrant is software. So we have a lot of software questions. That can be TCM, that can be anything the sheriff's working on, that can be email. And then the the second most popular service desk ticket is the hardware. My monitor's not working, my mouse doesn't work. How come my doc isn't showing my second monitor, things like that? And then servers is the least amount of thing that we get questions on and basically. So the service tickets are put in by users. Basically, the users don't have a lot to do with the servers, which is why that's always the smallest. Amount of tickets that come in. I think we only had three tickets in the last quarter, so so that's pretty good. Are there any questions on that? Unless we've just broken it down. I don't know if you prefer a bar graph or a pie graph. I like visuals. I think it shows you a good picture of where you're at.
Or what what are requests?
Help desk tickets. Oh, requests. This would be just basically miscellaneous things. That don't have a category. For instance, on the website, what do I click on to get to this? Or, hey, could you come up and look at this email I have? I'm not sure if it's safe to open, things like that. Just general miscellaneous requests. Account management is new users and old users, you know, managing the the user accounts. Phone system, that's pretty self explanatory. Hey, my phone's not working or this also includes phone numbers or a lot of spam calls, things like that. Any other questions on this? So then I just wanted to go over a couple of the projects. The big thing that we have been working with is the managed print solution. So the vendor has been. Finalizing and getting the different models ready for the different departments depending on their printing needs and we do have. A meeting tomorrow to get started. They have admitted that not all of the printers are yet available. And we all know that there's a chip shortage, so that is really put a dent in how much hardware we can get. They expect to have them all. But we're going to tomorrow in our meeting prioritize and decide. Which departments really need to be refreshed quickly, based on, you know, the time of year, what they're working on. What the printing needs are. The current printers will stay in place until they're replaced. So everybody's getting new printers. We did, you know, reached an agreement. They had originally wanted us to pay to ship all the printers back. That was like six thousand dollars. We worked with them and I said, well, you know, it doesn't make sense that we would have to pay to ship them back. Because why don't we just put the old one back on the truck when you take the new one off and they. They sent it up to management and they agreed. So I I'm glad that they decided they would work with us on that. So that's just another. Kudo for for the vendor and their dedication to keeping us long term. We are also working on permitting software for environmental health. If you recall, we were to the board a few weeks ago on the PIP software. The permitting software that Matt Corey had worked on. So we have. We've reached out to several vendors. I called four vendors so far, only two have responded. I have a meeting later this afternoon with one vendor and then a meeting last week with another vendor. So we're still waiting on getting some quotes so that we can do some comparison on those. I did put that in the CIP plan. For next year for FY twenty three. The paging system, this has been a long project and once again, due to hardware shortages. They've been installing speakers as they come in. And then there is going to be an amplifier at the admin building and at HSC. So those are the two. In addition to the Justice Center, we'll have three buildings that will have paging capability outside of what we can already do on our phones. So I believe the amplifier is getting installed this week. And once, once we have all the hardware and everything in place, then we need to come up with. Some kind of a policy that includes, you know, okay, we've got the system. Now, when do we need to use it? And who would use it and why and what action should be taken? There will be training with this, by the way, so. It it's pretty simple, but we will be trained on how to use the amplifiers and. I guess I I guess I'm going to throw it out to you, board. Who do you think should create this policy? Should I get together a couple volunteers from different departments to get their input or how should I approach that? Do you have any ideas offhand?
With, pardon, this is Lativa, with, give me some examples of what you anticipate this system being used for.
I would anticipate this would only be used if the phones are down. Because this is not focused, this isn't run on the network. So for instance, if there's a tornado coming or a fire. And we need to announce to everyone, you know, where to go, what to do. Those are the kinds of emergencies that we would need to use the paging system for. We don't page a lot on our phones. We could page more. I think we get a lot done without paging, but. And maybe I should reach out to emergency management also and get their input on the paging system and what they, what their ideas that it would be used for. But then we would.
My thinking, yeah.
And there, and then there was the question, where do we locate, you know, the amplifier? And and so in the admin building, it's up in the board of supervisors offices. But we have to make sure that if it's after hours, if it's accessible and and that would be facilities has access, but. Also, you know, then who would make the page? And I think we need to prioritize that. It really, this ties into our COOP COG. So thank goodness we're getting to the end of that. I know it's been long drawn out and and the the team, the embark team has been really great and. And they've been notifying us when they're going to be in the building and what they're going to be doing. So I think we're good on that. Website refresh, so we kind of went over that a little bit this morning. So we're we're kind of at a stall. We we've. We've got a lot of decisions made as far as the way the website might look. But once Civic Plus gets back to me with a a proposal, you know, on how we can improve the navigation, I think we can. Move full steam ahead on that. But like she said, I doubt if anything will be done before January or February. And then I also just wanted to bring up that we're doing a lot of cross training frantically in this department because. Our network administrator Kyle has told me that he will be leaving. He and his family plan to move to Florida this spring. And so we, we're going to dearly miss him and he's an integral part of the department, so going to be very missed. Also, just want to do, I know in the managers meeting a couple of weeks ago, we talked about the windstream faxing. And I think we've got this decisions from all the departments as to where they want to go with their fax numbers. So we are in the process of. Taking care of that for them. And then just one other thing that we'd worked on recently, the county attorney had asked for some courtroom updates so that they can. Present visual materials during court cases a little more easily and and look more professional. So originally, we thought, oh, yeah, we can just put a couple TVs on the wall and then they can have at it, but we did bring in. CTI, who had done the courtroom updates upstairs at the Justice Center in Courtrooms Two, Two A. And well, we're so glad that we brought him in because there's a lot more to it and we're not audio visual people. So we had him come in and do a quote and it came in a lot over what I had suspected it might. So we have that on the CIP as well and we'll be talking about that. But also, there was some concern, the courtrooms have decorative walls and we wanted to make sure that whatever we do in there doesn't. You know, take away from the beauty of what's on the wall. So facilities has agreed that they would drill any holes that would need to be drilled. And then if this was, if this was something we went forward with, then the the vendor would go ahead and install the system. And since it was over the twenty five thousand dollar threshold, we will be looking at other quotes. So what we have now is just a budgetary figure. Are there any questions?
When you're, would you include the sheriff in your, when you talk about paging systems? Could be, could include the sheriff's office?
Yes, the sheriff's office has a, an amplifier and a paging system there and. The jail and master control are pretty much in charge of that.
That's the policy, I'm saying. Cause you said you're going to talk to emergency management and facilities management. I would suggest the sheriff's office as well.
Sure, and and we've had informal discussions on that as well, but that's a good idea, thanks.
That Leanne as well.
Definitely. Because I think, I I think it will be part of the COOP COG, so Leanne will definitely be involved.
There's also that smaller handbook that's in the red notebook, that's the emergency instructions of what to do in case of tornado, whatever.
Yeah.
That you would really want to get, update the paging part there. Yes.
Anything else, board?
No, I think so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, board.
Next, under other reports, Amelia has been waiting patiently.
So thanks for letting me get this one on and thanks to Shelley for getting it on. Um, I brought to my attention this weekend by supervisor Merkin that there's an agenda item on tonight's council agenda about the Ames Urban Fringe. Related to the city council, Ames City Council adopting their twenty forty plan. And so I wanted to provide some more information on what that means and get some direction on if you'd like me to. Provide any comments to the council before the meeting or attend to provide comment meeting. So the twenty forty plan is being approved tonight. If Ames is comprehensive plan, so like our C two C plan. And it includes a urban, it includes like the fringe area. So their comprehensive plan looks at inside city limits and then as well how they'd like to grow. So. The Ames Urban Fringe Plan though is not immediately supplanted by the twenty forty plan. It's still in effect and we need to go through this amendment and update process now. So that the fringe plan takes into account the policies and land use that's laid out in the twenty forty plan and that'll be done by July. And so on tonight's agenda is continuing to follow the Ames Urban Fringe Plan. Even with the adoption of the twenty forty plan, with the exception of council would initiate. Annexation requests that are in line with the twenty forty plan and not necessarily the fringe plan. And I think that this is some language that needs to be clarified.
Yes, please.
Okay. So the city council, when an annexation request comes on, that comes to them, they first initiate the request. Which means they'd like to consider it further down the road, but tell staff to start the process of doing traffic studies. And annexation agreements about who pays what for extension of services, what needs to be done. Right now. Their policy is that they do not initiate annexations until. It, the property is in the urban service area in the Ames Urban Fringe Plan. And so if it isn't, then an amendment to the fringe plan has to occur before council initiate the annexation. Fringe plan amendments take three months, four months. A really long time. And so at this point, if they are going to need to amend the fringe plan. But we are working towards amending the fringe plan to have it match the twenty forty plan. The timeframe doesn't really make much sense to require an applicant to go through the fringe plan amendment process. Before the annexation can be initiated. And so it'll just allow city staff, if an annexation occurred, if there's a request. In this interim time to start the, start the process, start doing traffic studies. I communicated with their planning and development director and they would not take action to approve annexations. Until the twenty forty plan and the fringe plan, the fringe plan was adopted, it takes the twenty forty plan into account. And we have a twenty eighty that says the city cannot review annexation requests. If they're not in this urban service area designation. And my perspective is the review is the actual action of approving or denying an annexation. Not necessarily this first step of the initiation. But I really think that that needs to be clarified, that that's our understanding, that there will be no annexations approved. That aren't in conformance with the fringe plan. It's okay if you initiate and want to start studies. But a proven an annexation would be in in violation of the twenty eighty agreement.
I understand what you're saying in terms of a, an explanation. However, when I saw this and I saw consider, if I were somebody who was wanting to business out in that area. I'd say, well, city said you'd consider my request. That means you're going to act on it, right? Oh, no, we'll just do some studies. We can't act on it to the fringe plan. That, they need a different word in there besides consider because you thought the same thing when you.
I did, I was concerned, yeah. So would instead of consider, except that the city of Ames will consider initiating?
What about the city may?
City.
Study annexation of this.
Um, yeah, and I looked at their agenda for tonight, for instance, and there is an initiation on the agenda, so they actually use the word. Initiate an annexation request as this first step.
It's not an item search.
It's it's item thirty six, under planning and housing. Maybe it's at the end.
Oh, thirty six. Initiation of all of their.
Okay. May initiate annexations.
Wow, or does that mean that they, that they're doing their moving forward? Yeah. They initiate it, that's how I would read it.
Yes, but not approved. But not take final action.
Yeah, you have to.
May initiate but not take final action on.
Yeah.
Okay. I can write that in an email to council just to say, we'd request you'd clarify and amend that language. I completely agree with what supervisor Merkin stated, you know, if if we're all confused.
Yeah, and we haven't even. We're still drafting a letter.
Yep.
To send to get this process going.
Yes, and the council will be taking action on the, on initiating, like doing their own letter. The kickoff for the fringe plan amendment process at their January eleventh meeting, I think, if that's a Tuesday.
It's not in my window for.
Before then.
Before then.
I was going to do it this weekend and then.
Mine, I've been doing a little talk about, let's get, let's get a letter from the board to be served.
Yeah. I was making edits and then this came through and I thought, oh. I was making edits and then this came through and I thought, oh.
I don't know what you've been doing. I mean, I haven't seen any ordinance changes or anything like that. Come on.
So um, and then just if you're curious, I did some comparisons with the draft 2040 plan maps versus the Ames Urban Fringe Plan maps. I have a few slides if you want to look at what their draft scenarios are, but I could just email them to you too. So. Yeah. You can skip that.
Yeah.
And skip that. Okay. And then if you could push the spacebar. There we go. Okay. So this is Southwest. The main change, can you push the spacebar again, is you can see west of South Dakota and south of Highway 30, it's now designated as urban reserve, which means within the life of the 2040 plan, they really don't see annexations occurring in this area. It's an area that they'd like to maintain in agricultural production so that, you know, helps efficiency growth in the future. And maybe in 2060, they'll see annexation. But before that was urban service area, which meant it was an immediate annexation priority. They also have included, I think, when you see this hatch mark, that means that it's urban reserve and it's in unincorporated Story County. When you see a color underneath of it, that means that it's an annexation priority for the city. So this yellow underneath the hatch mark, that matches basically with, with what you see on the east side of South Dakota. North of Zuma Station Road presently. Let me go to the next slide. And then hit the spacebar a couple of times. Sorry. Oops. Yep. So this is same story, West Ames. What I've circled is it's urban reserve now in the 2040 plan, which means again, not immediate annexation potential within the life of the 2040 plan. And before north of railroad tracks in West Ames, it was urban service. So again, we're not seeing as much land being immediately annexed into Ames with this plan. Next, please. This is the north side of Ames. So I think there's urban reserve up to 180th, which means again, not within the life of the 2040 plan. Do they see annexation? There are some, there were some transitional spaces, some transitional area around the golf course. And where Bella Woods is. And some of the ag field south of 190th and just west of George Washington Carver that are now identified as immediate annexation priorities for Ames in the plans. I circled those.
Across from the Irons?
Yes.
And north of the church?
Yes, but.
Pretty wet.
Yeah.
When the 170th to 180th is all between 170th and 180th is all urban reserve?
No, I think the urban reserve only goes to 180th.
190th, 20.
190th, 20. Yeah, yeah. So there's no annexation that's really identified north of 190th in the life of the 2040 plan. And then there's no urban reserve designated above 180th as far as I know, unless my numbers are off on my street map. So and then just one more. This is East Ames. So some interesting changes in the 2040 plan for this area with some residential east of interstate 35. But and then there's some more urban reserve designated north of the present area, not going up all the way to 190th, but an area that they see maybe, you know, in 40 years, there can be some more residential or you know, industrial development in that area, commercial. So.
Would you some of those ones?
Yeah. And this is just the draft. So I just got it off their website and took snips. So I don't know if they're going to change it tonight. But yeah, I can send these. I thought it was interesting.
So so the overall difference that you're pointing out is that it's less?
Less, less immediate annexation that is in the current urban service area, but the urban reserves is a new concept that we're going to need to work into the Ames Urban Fringe Plan in terms of preserving agricultural land as ag land so that if we're not creating development issues for the city in the future. And that's a new concept that what designation it falls under, we're going to need to figure out. Is it ag farm service? So we reserve it, but plus an overlay to indicate that this in the future, we're reserving it because the city might grow into it and yeah, however long.
But that's all. Just because it's the 2040 plan doesn't mean it automatically goes into the version of the stuff.
No. Not necessarily. Yeah, we're going to work through that.
Yeah.
Yep. So I will email city councilmen requesting just clarification of the language they use tonight.
I think it would say more actually.
Okay.
Lot of Haitian people for them as well as for us.
Yeah. Okay. Yep. Thank you.
That's coming agenda items. A right to public forum number two, comments on the public items. Not on this agenda, the board may not take any action on the comments to the requirements of the meetings, although they do so in the future. Anyone like to make public comment? Staff on Zoom and here. And I'm not speaking on the meeting themselves, so we'll close public comment at this time. You want to go through meetings or segments or it's 1:00.
I think they're all still on work sessions.
So I think so too. Yeah. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Show.
The move is second Merkin.
Aye.
Faisal.
Aye.
Ted is aye. We are adjourned.